All right, seven o'clock, we will call the Republican Village Board meeting to the board. Everyone rise and say good morning, please.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we do come.
Here.
Joan.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Approval of corrections to the minutes in the June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen regular voting board meeting. Are there any issues or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept approval as presented. Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, second by trustee Powell.
Parker.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
And?
President.
Mariska.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Okay, accounts payable payroll, payroll paid three hundred and sixty-six, twenty-nine, nineteen, in the amount of forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five, eighty-one. Accounts payable general fund, forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-four, fifty. Are there any questions on any of the bills or payroll? Not a motion to pay the whole standard payroll.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Anne, second by trustee Marica.
Anne.
Yes.
Marica. Joan.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions outside of the upcoming public hearing. We'll move on to reports of committees, village administrators.
Okay, I just want to point out that I met with East York County mayors and managers. We met with local officials regarding the east-west truck route. And we talked about the capital bill, so that was an important meeting, so we had the ear of new local officials and we're trying to address the issue of trucks moving east and west across the county and how to mitigate that, so probably defer any questions, some of course in the packet.
Please take your part. Engineers. Troy has not been... Trustees, have you had any questions with the engineer? Okay, we'll move on. In the next, you have the report from the co-enforcement officer also. No, only business, so we'll move on to new business. Item A, public hearing, public hearing, proposed annexation agreement, north-west quarter of I-57 and Peatone Road, RPHD Incorporated, Patel and... That's I-57, that's a... Patel petitioners.
Thank you very much, Anne. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Arby, obviously, I'm here before one of the village attorneys. This is the time set for the public hearing, proposed annexation agreement between the village and that Wally properties and Mr. Patel, who is here president. The property is located at northwest corner of I-57 in Wilmington, Peatone Road. There are actually two adjoining parcels consisting of about twenty-six point five acres in total. The proposal, the annexation would result in the property being divided into three lots for development, essentially one truck stop lot, hotel lot, and the restaurant lot. The property is between someone through auto or services, especially used for the hotel and restaurants, and there is also going to be a request of curiation to allow the hotel to be through stories, which will come about later. The annexation agreement provides a builder license agreement. It also provides, of course, the proper stormwater, rain cage, and that sort of thing as part of the development process. And by way of improvements, the annexation agreement requires the improvement of the eighty-eighth avenue, and that would be eighty-eighth avenue, which is just to the west of the parcel, from Wilmington Peatone Road to approximately sixteen hundred feet to the north. And that eighty-eighth avenue improvement, as well as necessary water sewer improvement sidewalks, and certain requirements are going to be provided by the developer of the parcel. Aqua water is going to be required to extend the water and sewer lines to the, actually to the corner of eighty-eighth and Wilmington Peatone Road. And the way that they're going to do that, they're taking the order of the route under the I-57, then proceed south along the property line to the development parcel. Now, on the north side of the development parcel, the water and sewer is proposed to go out to eighty-eighth avenue, and then down eighty-eighth, the corner of eighty-eighth and Wilmington Road. You can picture that. There are substantial revenues estimated to be coming to the village from this development. Those revenues would be in terms of sales tax, hotel tax, and truck parking fee when they're there, and other sources of tax revenue that will be substantial, conservatively probable in the area, just on the tax side, of two hundred thousand or so per year once the development is up and running. The annexation agreement provides that the village is going to essentially purchase the property or pay for the property, and then that property will be conveyed to the developer. The cost of the property in the village is estimated at a million, two hundred thousand, a million, three hundred thousand dollars, which is well within the range of value. The annexation agreement provides that either one, we will purchase it and sell it back to the developer, or there's another alternative that hasn't been finalized yet. There would be a grant to the developer of the purchase price, and that grant would be conditioned, and the condition of the grant would force the completion of the development as proposed and as approved. In order to secure the village's interest in that, essentially getting the return of the money that's going to be paid for the property, there'll be a letter of credit pursuant to the annexation agreement issued by that Wally and Mr. Patel in the amount of the purchase price, so that in the event the development is not completed or not done in a way in which it is supposed to be done in part of the agreement, the village could draw a lot of credit to receive the value that's put into the property. So, one interesting aspect of the agreement perhaps for persons here is that we are going to assist the Wally in getting the property. The village is also working on the creation of a tax and financing district that will cover that territory. It will cover this development parcel, as well as the parcel immediately to the south, which is common with one is the Alexander parcel, which we've amassed a month or two ago, I don't know if you said a month or two ago. And then will also, it's also proposed to cover the southeast corner of Wilmington Peatone Road and I-57. That's where the lake is, and that parcel area has not been, not even have any there. That's also proposed at this time to possibly include within the tax and financing district. That's under process now, and of course, there's procedures to go through to create a, quote, a TIF district of those areas, but we're anticipating that, and it's on schedule, will be created, quote, in the next few months. There will be some hearings of the TIF in addition to this hearing on the annexation agreement. The tax and financing district, as some of you might know, takes the tax base at the time of the creation of the district, and then it's frozen at that point. As the assessed value goes up and the taxes are paid on the increased assessed value, for example, Mr. Patel's truck stop and so on and so forth, that increase goes into what is known as the special tax allocation fund that the village has, and that increased money then can be used for project and development costs, as well as other improvements that are maybe necessary out there, and also could be drawn upon to repay the village for the cost of the property. Lastly, there is, of course, a site plan that has been presented at board meetings before. I think everybody's pretty pleased with the site plan as it goes. The landscaping, berming trees, other amenities in terms of the landscape, will be up for final approval once the project is totally engineered out, and the village board will have also approved that final landscaping plan. All in all, I think we're looking forward to getting moving on this, and I think with that, by way of introduction, it's time to turn it over and ask if there are any questions, anything that you would like to know about this proposed annexation agreement, and I'll hand the mic back to our students.
Thank you, Jim. So, at this time, the public hearing is open, and we are accepting comments from the public. If anybody would like to speak, make sure you sign in and step up to the mic and give your name and...
I'd like to bring my better hat with me.
Sure, sure.
Hi, Andy and Pam Howard, we live on the west side of town on Warren Road, and we just had some questions, really about the infrastructure. You certainly did a nice job of explaining the project, but it seems like you rid a Gilbert I-57 that you'd be in adequate for that type of traffic. The armrests also, just don't see a semi-truck negotiating that turn to get into the truck stop there. That'd be a big concern. I know the bridge at Moni Manhattan ended up being widened a few years ago, and it just seems to me that this bridge is also going to have to get widened, and crews are going to pay for that. Let's see, utilities, you talked about Aqua, bringing water, and three case power, fiber, gas, I imagine. That's a big step to bring that over the interstate. That's going to open the door for development down that road, and that's a two-lane highway that's going to widen that, that's going to, you know, get the moving utilities. It's going to be a big project. Let's see. It just seems to me that down the road, a few miles, they've already done those infrastructure improvements down south of Mantina. They've built the armrests, and it seems like a better location. I'm just wondering why we're going to build that here when there's a truck stop fairly close in Moni. Sounds like we're opposed, but maybe we are a little bit, we like our way of life out of where we're at, and nothing will change, I think. So, you know, infrastructure, I think that's...
So, I'll maybe let the engineer talk on the utilities, you know, that type of thing. And I agree with you that that intersection is going to, you know, need some development as the time goes forward, and that's not going to happen until they have development. You know, and that's the same thing that happened in Moni, you know, that improvements didn't come until they had the development there, you know, causing, they're not going to come in the state, I got Will County, get to Wilmington Road, Isaac County Road, the two-lane road that you speak of. So ultimately, they'll be responsible, and that road is supposed to be a four-lane road at some point in time in the future, I mean, in their projections and in their plans. And, you know, as far as growing west, I've always thought personally that that is the way Peatone's going to grow, you know, in the next twenty, thirty, forty years, Peatone's going to go west, you know, to the other side of I-57. We're really probably not going to grow too much to the north, or too much to the south, or too much to the east, but I really feel that, you know, west is the way that the village is going to grow. But there is been some work on utilities, and Miguel and Troy, the village engineer talk on that.
Yes, so, I think you're right in the fact that at some point, Wilmington Peatone Road is going to need to be widened, there's going to be more traffic coming from this development, from other developments, and just, you know, the region in general. Kind of like they alluded to, the bridge is an IDA jurisdiction, Wilmington Peatone Road is a Will County road, and we've had a discussion with them, either of them will do improvements for the warranted by the traffic numbers and by, you know, for the development, you can't do traffic. So, you know, we've tried to push it on that, and it's, they say they can't do it unless they're warranted by traffic numbers. So, you know, development coming in, more traffic is the one thing that's going to eventually spur, you know, the widening of the road, and new brand, you know, brand interchange is not going to make it. As far as the trucks and making the turn, the, and everything like that, it is a, you know, it has a slope to it, it's not an extreme slope, it kind of looks like it because it's an investment, but all we can do as an engineer to add standards, and that's what we're doing in our current plans. The intersection will be significantly wider, there'll be a very large turning radius for trucks to make that right turn. As far as trucks making the left turn out of there, it's, it may not be easy some days when there's a lot of traffic, but, you know, we've looked at the site distance, and we've done, what I have, you know, is show through manuals for the design of the road, and that's really all we can do at this point, and then, you know, hopefully not roaming by, trigger some sort of traffic signal or other type of trouble. As far as utilities, the I-57 is going to be widened, the land will be, the land for the road will be widened to be, you know, right away acquisition, so it will be more for utilities for the length of the road, and, you know, eventually from down the road further north, and they can, you know, it goes in the non-area, the same thing has to happen when the road has to be widened, you know, land has to be bought so the utilities can continue to move, so. Anything else that I can say, any questions?
No, I just, I mean, is that the direction we're going, and we want to go with that? It seems like that'll spur more of these big concrete box buildings and that sort of thing that we see, and that's the direction we're being driven.
The development, future development there is going to depend on, you know, annexation of future property, people wanting, you know, to develop their property. That whole concept of development is something that the village has to look at, you know, love term, we are planning zoning condition, and the village board, there are no set plans on what the next phase is going to be. Personally, I see, as we get further down, I see residential, you know, development occurring that direction, not necessarily all commercial, but right in that interchange area, that's prime commercial property, and I think once this development occurs, and you spoke of, you know, going down the road, and there's a new interchange there, and that's very true, I think we're very fortunate that Mr. Patel, you know, has came to Peatone, has saw us out, you know, as a place that he wants to develop, this travel center, this hotel, and this future restaurant, I think, I think it's a fantastic thing for the community, and I think for the future of the community, I think it's very important. I, again, I've always said, getting to the west side of I-57, I think is important for the, for the future of the village, and that's part of the whole Aqua sale, as well as, you know, we've talked about that previously, to some a lot of potential liability, you know, the water and sewer thing, but also having a partner in Aqua to almost get to the other side of I-57 and to continue to grow the village, I think that's very important. Any other questions? Anyone else in the public, any other having their questions? Can we go to the board yet?
Yes, now, the board, any board member have any question? I know they're all pretty familiar with what's going on, they may not, but they do.
Could we review the articles one more time, as far as the positive effects of the village's effect on...
So, to touch on the revenues, I'm sorry, I... So, one other, I just have another copy. And Jim, you touched on, so the revenue sources that we're talking about with this project are the real estate taxes, and then some additional revenues, the business development districts, in addition to the TIF district we're looking at, offering a business development district, so that would be an additional one percent for hotel and sales tax, that would be additional revenues, the usual one percent sales tax, there's a gaming tax, nine percent gaming tax for the village. So, Jim pointed out, the cumulative total being coming to the village annually would be approximately two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ninety-two dollars annually. Apart from those sources combined, totally estimated, but if this is, if this chart gets passed down, and you can see, cumulatively, over the years, substantially accumulates. So, in that, in that first year that I mentioned, that two hundred and fifty-nine thousand approximately is prior to real estate taxes being assessed on it, so that next year in 2023, we're assuming in 2022, there really wouldn't be any real estate taxes being assessed at that point. So, the next year, 2023, cumulative tax, taxes, including the real estate portion, you'd see five hundred and fifty-five thousand approximately in 2023 from this project, with those revenue sources I mentioned, including the property tax. And you just, you know, add those cumulatively over the years, that's a substantial revenue source for the village.
Any other trustees? Anything else from the public? If there's no other questions or comments, then we will close the public hearing. Do you have a motion, Jim?
Probably a good idea, I guess.
So, I have a motion to close the public hearing on proposed annexation agreement. Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, second by trustee Anne.
Parker.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Anne and Marica.
Yes.
We're up, good gentleman, team, and Parker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. We will move on to item D, the agenda, rattle license application, Peatone Power Club to keep the rattle in conjunction with the Peatone Power Club Annual Power Show, July twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, in the downtown area. The purpose of the rattle was to donate proceeds to the local charity, Peatone American Legion Christmas for the Kids. Is there a motion to approve the rattle license?
No motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Anne, second by trustee Parker.
Anne.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Marica.
Yes.
Item C, special women permit application, Christ Community Church, 103 West Corning Avenue, July eighteen, two thousand nineteen, petting zoo and wagon rides in conjunction with Vacation Bible School. They'll be holding Vacation Bible School Thursday, July eighteen, the Great Day of Friday, July nineteenth, planning the event at six to eight P M. They're holding a Western theme Vacation Bible School in the evening of July fifteenth through the nineteenth, from the eighteenth, they'd like to have a petting zoo and wagon rides, and the map for the wagon rides is attached, and their proposed route for that is to go down from the church down Railroad, yeah, down Railroad Street to North Street, North Street to First Street, First Street back, just past the dance studio, to the alley that runs behind the church, and then back to the airport. Questions or discussion? If not a motion to approve the special women permit application of Christ Community Church?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Marica, second by trustee Parker.
Marica.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Item D, home disposal contract addendum, extending contract by two years, and to change refuse billing for the village to home disposal.
This is the actual addendum to our existing contract, where we're asking home disposal to take over the billing for refuse pickup in the village of Peatone. Right now, the village is doing the billing, and it's just more efficient process if home disposal takes over the billing for it, so with that, we extend the contract for two years, and it'll cost one dollar more per month for residents on their bill, which is their bill quarterly, so that is what is part of this addendum.
So, this was discussed at committee of, was it committee of the board, at the last meeting, and the board had instructed the village administrator to move forward and bring this back. Is there any question to discuss? If not a... If not, a motion to approve the residential refuse collection amendment, addendum one. Second? Motion by trustee Anne, second by trustee Jones.
Anne?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Maritza?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item E, resolutions, number one, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a declaration of trust of the Illinois Trust, formerly known as the Illinois Institutional Investors Trust, and investment of funds into the trust through PFM Asset Management LLC.
So based upon the Administrative Oversight Committee, this is a resolution that would take 75% of $9 million proceeds from Aqua and put them with the recommended firm, PFM, as investment funds and put them into the ITT Fund, Mutual Fund Account for our Division of AOC Committee.
Again, this was discussed by the board at the last meeting and direction was given to bring the resolution back for approval. Is there any further discussion? If not, a motion to adopt resolution number 2019-R-04, resolution approving and authorizing execution of a declaration of trust of the Illinois Trust, formerly known as the Illinois Institutional Investors Trust, and investment of funds into the trust to be of the Asset Management LLC. Second? Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Baraka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Maritza?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number two, a resolution approving and authorizing investment of village funds with First Request A. This, again, is coming back from the last meeting. And this would be an investment of...
25% of the $9 million.
So 25% of the $9 million as recommended by the Administrative Oversight Committee. Any further questions or discussion? If not, a motion to adopt resolution number 2019-R-05, a resolution approving and authorizing investment of village funds with First Request A.
So vote.
Second? Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Maritza?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item F, ordinance, number one, an ordinance that may be titled with the theme "Land Usage" in the village of Peatone, Will County, State of Illinois, individual lot topographical surveys and silt fencing.
Thank you. So we went through the building committee with this issue and they sent it forward to you for approval. So we do individual top of foundation surveys to make sure that our homes are at grade and be where they should be. So this is, this was solidified in the ordinance and put into our building code. And we have our building inspector here, and we have our engineer here, who I think can probably give you a more technical explanation of it. So I'll let Tom give you a little bit more of an explanation, why we need to do this. And also, we did include silt fencing in here as well in this particular ordinance, which I think you might have heard trustee March talk about at previous meeting.
The initial part is the lot grading surveys. Right now, our ordinance just says that they must provide a survey plat at the time of building permit. And then they pretty much leave it up to the village engineer and I as far as what information is required. In the four years that I've been here, the village engineer and I have been requiring a little more specific information. Developers, engineers, builders, engineers just want to take the engineering off of the grading plans. Well, in the past, they were never built to specifically to those grading plans. So what Troy does is he makes sure that they also shoot the foundations of the existing houses that are constructed next to them. We found in many cases that they weren't built to the plans, so he's had to adjust the grading to make sure they work. So we require very specific information on the initial survey. Then we require a top of foundation survey to make sure that when they put the foundation in, it meets what they were supposed to build. And then there's a final grading to show that when they do get the final landscaping in, that it meets what it was supposed to. The second part of the ordinance is the soil erosion and stormwater management provisions of our code exempt single-family homes from a site development permit. And our national discharge permit says you don't need silt fencing if you're disturbing less than an acre and a half. We've had a lot of issues recently with no protection around storm sewer inlets and just in general, lack of silt fencing. So trustee March had requested that the village engineer and I come up with language to require silt fencing. Troy has been making, put it on the site plans, but there really had no specific authority to do so. So this gives Troy and I the ability to require soil erosion fencing and silt protection around our storm sewer inlets. So it tightens up both ordinances. I will say, you know, Troy is the one that did the language on the silt fencing. And the other language we've been using for many, many years together.
And this is really important, stormwater management, proactive stormwater management. So, thank you for putting this ordinance together.
Any questions?
Any questions from the trustees? Thank you, Tom. Any discussion from the board? I know this came out of the committee and you guys can talk about it. Any rules, guys in the room? All right, if no further discussion, motion to adopt ordinance number 19-19 and ordinance amending Title 18, "Land Usage" to the village of Peatone, Will County, State of Illinois. Second? Motion by trustee Baraka, second by trustee Anne.
Maritza?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item G, questions in the press? No press, present. Item A, correspondence, communications, petitions. I just wanted to make mention, we had a little bit of a windstorm a week and a half, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I guess it was, right? Anyway, quite a few branches came down in town. We had some big trees come down, we had some streets blocked. I came back into town right after that hit and started driving around. I called Bob Akey, the director of Public Works, and he was already on his way up to the village hall. A couple of the other guys came and also, they were out, well, the storm was still going on. They were out working, trying to at least get the streets cleared, get the streets over. The police department was out assisting also. And I think everybody did a great job that night. And the next day, the real cleanup started and it's still ongoing. You know, at this time, Public Works is still picking up brush. I just want the public to make, Beecher and Washington Township both came in on Monday to get a hand. They just showed up and said, hey, we're here, can we help? And they did, they worked all day with our guys. And then it was either Wednesday or Thursday, Crete showed up. I came over with a couple of trucks and a chipper and lent a hand all day, which really, really made a big difference and really helped out a lot. You know, in the past, we've always worked well, you know, with all of our surrounding communities. When they had blips, you know, we'd go out and help them. And just, you know, pays, they come back and they came back and helped us. So we really appreciate that very much. But if you do have brush, you know, it goes to the curb, in the parkway, not in the street. And Public Works is still continuing to loop the town and picking up brush. They'll continue to do so until it's all cleaned up. Anything else from any of the trustees? Amy, Jim, anything else? And nothing else, a motion to adjourn? Second? Motion by trustee Parker, second by trustee Jones.
Parker? Jones?
Yes.
Maritza?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.